Councilmember Barth.
President.
Councilmember Bokey.
President.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen, if you'd excuse me, Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Now would you all rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intolerant public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first section of our agenda is proclamations and presentations. And for this, we are recognizing our small business showcase, Mr. Shawn Briggs, Briggs &amp; Briggs Attorneys. Would you please join me at the podium? So it's always a pleasure to recognize a stalwart small business in the city of Lakewood. It's my particular pleasure as a forty-plus-year member of the bar to be able to say something nice about lawyers in public.[445.01][445.01](Laughter). Although that does bear on the credibility of my remarks. As a twelve-year-old, Shawn Briggs found himself at a conference for trial lawyers. At twelve, Shawn Briggs found himself at a conference of trial lawyers. As the son of a general practice attorney, it's not out of the ordinary for that youngster to be there. But what was unusual, that he actually wanted to be there and even attended seminars and lectures. Today Briggs is ranked as one of the top 100 trial lawyers by the National Trial Lawyers Association and was named a super lawyer by Washington Law and Politics. A University of Washington undergrad, thirty-one points, thirty-five points for the Ducks, and a University of Puget Sound law grad, Briggs joined his father, Robert R. Briggs, in 1986 at the Lakewood Law Firm that bears the family name. It is the oldest firm in Lakewood. His father started the firm in 1952 as a general practice attorney. Like his father, Briggs began his legal career focused on general practice, but soon found his niche with personal injury cases. Pursuing car crash cases in court allows Briggs to combine physics, medicine, and law, all subjects he enjoys. His firm is the first in the Northwest to download and use data from the computer systems of cars to help prove how accidents happen, the forces involved, and how people get injured. Located at 10222 Gravelly Lake Drive Southwest, Briggs &amp; Briggs employs ten people, including attorney Marie Doctor, who has nineteen years' experience and specializes in complex injury cases, tracking accidents, and maritime injuries. She also represented the victims of the Oso landslide. It is because of the firm's longstanding presence in Lakewood and Shawn Briggs' commitment to the community and seeking justice for those who are injured that the Lakewood City Council recognizes the law offices of Briggs &amp; Briggs as the October 2019 Business Showcase. Shawn, I'd like to present you with this plaque that hopefully you can hang in your office. And I'll invite you to say a couple of words after we get the obligatory photo here. No more than ten minutes, just like an appellate argument.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate the city staff and council providing this recognition. I'm not sure that this will make it. Yeah, it might make it on the wall. It's got my picture on it. My staff might draw faces on it like they do on all the pictures that I've got, pirate patches and those kinds of things, mustaches. But thank you. It's really been a pleasure. I grew up here in Lakewood and I've enjoyed serving the citizens of Lakewood and plan to keep doing it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.[638.13][638.13](Applause). Now, come on down. It's also our practice to take a picture. If you want to invite your family down, see they're here. They don't have to.[650.66][650.66](Laughter). We now move to the public comment section of the agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Yellow light comes on as a thirty-second warning. Red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Paul Bokey, Lakewood, Washington. First person who has signed up to speak is DJ Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am DJ Brown. My wife Judy and I own and operate Tacoma Trophy here in Lakewood. Within the last year, we've been recognized at the City of Lakewood Business Showcase. Last month, we were recognized by the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce as Business of the Year. I'm here today regarding the change in Lakewood's sign ordinance that the council approved and started enforcing in July of this year. Almost daily, we get calls from people asking where our store is located. This despite the fact that the monument sign stands on 100th Street. Tonight, here in hopes that the body will recognize that a one-size-fits-all approach significantly with regard, specifically with regard to the banning of the flag banners, unfairly penalizes businesses like ours. For almost ten years, we've used flag banners as an additional and very effective marketing tool for our business. On a daily basis, when weather permits, we put our fourteen-foot flags directly in front of our store, just a few feet from the building, nowhere near the road, nor any way obstructing anything. Our bright yellow, well-maintained flags were another signal to customers and potential customers that we, in fact, were open. Our flags represent our business. The flags attracted attention where the monument sign at the street often does not. We not only use the feather banners in our own marketing efforts, we sell them as well, and that ban cuts into our sales, which also cuts into the taxes we collect. Our flags never remained out overnight. We brought them in every night when we closed for the day. We do find it very unfair that people, the same people that passed the ordinance banning how a business in our city is allowed to advertise itself, but made sure they were able to post their own political "elect me" signs all over the city, right next to the roads and the medians, which are a lot more distracting than a couple of flag banners a hundred feet off the main road would ever be. How about passing and enforcing an ordinance regarding political signs that litter their streets well after the elections instead of penalizing businesses that follow the rules, pay the tax, and actually care about how the business presents to the community? Or better yet, focus energy on arresting the tigers who are defacing the public buildings continuously, homeless people breaking into our locked garbage dumpsters regularly and leaving messes that we need to clean up over and over again?
The next person who's signed up is Mr. Walter Neary.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Walter Neary. I live in Lakewood. I want to thank Mr. Spieth for letting me climb over him just now. I live two blocks from the Lakewood Library, and so it's with great interest, I've been following some of the developments in the library, which of course I know are keyed to some of the great work y'all have been doing in the downtown core. The Pierce County Library Board had a meeting a couple of weeks ago at the Lakewood Library. Councilmember Branstadter was there, and there was a really good discussion about community involvement. Today, from three to five, the Pierce County Library Board had a study session in Parkland, and I didn't see a lot of Lakewood residents there. In fact, I saw one by looking at my own hand, so I wanted to kind of report back, just some observations. First of all, I just want to say, the Pierce County Library Board is a very intelligent, sober group of folks who had what I thought was one of the more reasoned discussions I've ever heard about the implications of how you cite something and how you potentially ask people to approve a tax. It was founded on a community engagement survey, and I guess they got the idea of the survey company from you all in the downtown work. And I have to say, the survey group did a really good job identifying the concerns of Lakewood. And as Councilmember Branstadter noted at the meeting, the survey created a certain amount of uncertainty. Oh, what are you planning for the Lakewood Library? And it also created some expectations. What are you going to do about Telecom? They had a great discussion about how people in Lakewood are concerned about their taxes and concerned about costs, but they really value libraries. So I guess the upshot of what I wanted to say is, I encourage you to keep in discussions with them. My impression is that because of the weight of conducting something like maybe a campaign to raise taxes, they're thinking of going on maybe a slower timetable than some of us might want, perhaps for Lakewood and certainly for Telecom, which they recognize deserves a better library and a safer, or perception of a safer library than they have now. But they're a great group of folks to work with, and just for what it's worth, I thought the way they're approaching things is pretty intelligent. They're talking about perhaps waiting until 2022 in order to do all of the community discussions and also to go to the voters in a year when they might have a chance of getting enough citizens to participate in bond. So whatever y'all have been doing with them, it's working, and I do think they want to be great partners. So. Thank you.
Thank you. So all the people who've signed up for public comment, but if there's anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment, please queue up behind the podium at this time.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. Just a little bit of news. After much deliberation, I finally got a fence next to the skate park. Cost about $5,000 just for materials, but at least I've got a fence. So I'm hoping the graffiti that seems to continue happening, and of course, the Lakewood police know who they are because they've got deliberate signatures. Trouble is, unless you've seen them do it, you can't prove it's theirs. So we're caught in a kind of a gray area. Anyway, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Hearing none, I will declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of September 23, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of September 23, 2019. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Retreat of September 28, 2019. D, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of October 7, 2019. E, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of October 7, 2019. F, motion number 2019-61, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement for cooperative planning, design, construction, and maintenance of the Chambers Creek Canyon Trail. G, motion number 2019-62, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Northeast Electric, LLC in the amount of $198,686 for the construction of the 2019 citywide repair project. H, motion number 2019-63, authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Miles Resources, LLC, increasing construction spending in the amount of $50,000 for the Fort Silicon Park Utility Improvement Project. I, motion number 2019-64, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Parametrics, Inc., increasing construction spending in the amount of $461,670.14 for Phase II Design Services related to the Veterans Drive Southwest Project. J, motion number 2019-65, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Transpo Group in the amount of $329,580 to analyze local transportation impacts. K, motion number 2019-66, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Stuck Environmental Services, LLC, in the amount of $78,936 for conservation, banking, and partnering. L, motion number 2019-67, authorizing the execution of an agreement with AHBL, Inc., in the amount of $79,965 for affordable off-installation housing. M, motion number 2019-68, amending the 2019-2020 biennial legislative agenda and policy manual. N, ordinance number 718, adopting changes to the 2019 Shoreline Master Program. And O, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, Public Safety Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes of August 7, 2019, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of September 5, 2019, and Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of September 18, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by you, Councilmember Barth, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? If you're in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on rezoning five parcels from Open Space Recreation Two to Open Space Recreation One located at or near the location of the former Fort Silicon Golf Course property.
For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Tiffany Spears, Special Projects Planning Manager in the Community and Economic Development Department. As the city clerk just mentioned, this is a rezone of five parcels. They are located at the former Fort Silicon Golf Course location, just north of the Western State Hospital Complex, and then just north also of Fort Silicon Park. Within your packet, starting on page 233, you'll see a brief staff report about this. There are graphics showing which parcels are being discussed on page 234, and then following that, there's a description of the differences between the types of uses allowed in OSR Two, Open Space and Recreation Two versus OSR One. And then you also have the Planning Commission Resolution recommending this rezone following that. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Spear? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to the public testimony portion of the public hearing. This is when any member of the public may speak. Again, very similar to the public comment section, except the subject matter is limited to the rezoning of five parcels from OSR Two to OSR One at or near the former Fort Silicon Golf Course. Again, please identify yourself by name and city of residence. You have three minutes, and the warning sign comes on at thirty seconds. There's a yellow light, red light, your time is up. No one has signed up on the public hearing signup sheet. Does anyone wish to speak at the public hearing regarding the rezone? Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing regarding the rezone?
This is my first meeting. My name is Tamara Cook. Nice, thank you for letting me talk. I just have a little critique at the way this is done, and I'm kind of shocked because of the, because of the way this is done. You give poor illustrations. Things could be done a lot better to be more informative for the public. The media that's shown up here is not very well done. It doesn't show a lot for us to be able to decipher. I'm wondering why there's not a television so that this isn't piped into our homes so that we can view this stuff all the time and know exactly what's going on and be able to look it up on the internet. This is kind of like back in the 1950s. I took corporate media at Clover Park in the 1990s, and this is way before that. So I'm kind of shocked that you're not even using PowerPoints to do this. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing regarding the rezoning of five parcels at or near the former Fort Silicon Golf Course? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to, ma'am, I would note that it's all on our website, it's posted in advance. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come?
There is no unfinished business.
Any new business to come before the council? Then we move to reports by the city manager, Ms. Kraus.
The first item I'd have is I'd like to call on Parks Director Mary Dodsworth to give an update on the Sealy Lake Improvement Project.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm excited to share this information with you this evening. The city of Lakewood and Pierce County have an opportunity to make some improvements at Sealy Lake Park. The city had budgeted $50,000 in our stormwater capital budget this year to make some assessments of the stormwater system and to determine if it's functioning properly as well as the quality of the water coming out. While we meet fairly regularly for various reasons with the county, we were talking about the Chambers Creek Canyon Path Project, and this happened, Sealy Lake happened to come up, found out that Pierce County had also budgeted resources this year to do some work there to really look at the environmental habitat and maybe do some cleanup there. So we started talking about how we could work together to make, have it be a more efficient process. For instance, if you were doing a wetland delineation and doing some survey work, why not survey it in a manner that could be utilized in the future for trail or access improvements? So we got all the right people together and started talking about the opportunities and came up with a plan that we think will work well for the city. As we started working on this, we've been working on it for several months. The county has a lot of other projects that they're working on, they just weren't sure they were going to be able to get to this. So they did ask if we would take the lead for helping to, you know, facilitate a consultant or whoever we needed to work with to do this. So we have the capacity to do that this year and next year. We have resources budgeted this year. The county has resources this year and resources next year. So we want to take full opportunity to utilize those resources. We've been talking about Sealy Lake. I've been here for eighteen years. Mayor Harrison, I think, the first, one of my first weeks here said, what are you going to do about Sealy Lake Park? And it's just never come up on our list of things to do, and now we're excited that it's on several lists of things to do, and it's a time we can work together. We work well with the county, and we really feel like we'll be able to have a strong city voice. And although it's county property, it's certainly in the middle of our city. We use it, Harrison Prep uses it, the Y uses it. We think that there's, our seniors use it at the Senior Activity Center. We see a lot of potential for this project, so we're excited about being able to do that. And we feel like if we take the lead, we can help push it forward and get that done this year and early next year. The MOU's laid out pretty clearly, kind of the city parts would be, we would focus on the stormwater improvements or stormwater assessments. The county would take a look at the environmental and habitat issues, and then we'd all work together on safety and public access.
Any questions? Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So kind of give a little bit more detail. At the end of the day, besides studying this thing, like, because apparently there's stormwater going in from all over the place, which presents its own issues. So, and then, so you'll do a study of that, but at the end of the day, what do we have? Do we have? Do we have any park, is any dirt being moved at all or is it just study, figure out the next step?
We, we hope that with the resources that have been allocated towards this, that we would, we would determine how the stormwater system, so that would be an assessment, how the stormwater system functions. About 250 acres worth of land stormwater comes into that site. We would take a look at how we might make, if there was water quality issues or maybe capacity issues or aged systems that need to be replaced. Instead of putting in maybe a big cement stormwater facility, structure, we may look at, maybe there's some habitat improvements that could happen in a more natural way to deal with that water. We do anticipate that trail work would occur. You know, it's got a pretty good trail around it now and so we don't see that needing a lot of resource, but part of it is wet during the winter, fall/winter months. So there could be a little buildup or a little, maybe boardwalk or a little bridge or something might need to be done. Or some of the area might need to be raised and so there could be some permitting issues there that would have to be addressed, adjusted. But we do hope at the end, we have a facility that's safer, like maybe limbing some things up, opening some things up. That's been a recommendation of our police department. And then also making the trail more usable and accessible for everybody so that you can see in there if anybody's trying to, you know, pitch a tent or if someone's dumping a mattress over the fence or maybe working with our neighbors over by the big lots, that area, because a portion of it is adjacent to that and to see what we can do about parking and graffiti, things like that. So we do hope that it would be an improved site that our city could use. Now, if we do the assessment and find out there's some major flaw in our stormwater system, that could need to be adjusted in a different way. We would come back and, and share that with you if, but we don't anticipate that. We would anticipate that this would almost be like an urban park that would be able to be utilized by the community when we're done with this project. And we'll keep you up to date along the way as we find things out.
So the trail itself just loops around the whole thing?
Correct.
Right? And then what I guess would be the southern portion, that's kind of where there's more woods. So does the trail go right through there or does it go skirt around the pond, the lake?
Yeah, it goes all the way around. So if you were to enter off of the parking lot by the Lakewood Community Center, you could, in the summertime, which is when we were there, you can walk around the whole thing and get right back to the same parking lot without any problem. In the wintertime or in the, this time of year when it starts raining, in the wintertime on the, this is north, let me figure out where I'm at here, over by the big lot side, by the apartments, that side gets quite wet. And I'm not sure if it's from rainwater, stormwater. We're not quite sure exactly what all of the reasons are, but it's not as passable and it's kind of gunky. So we, I don't know if that's a technical term, but, so that would be the area where we'd probably need the most improvement or the most rehabilitation, so to speak, restoration to make it more functional year round. Our goal is to make it functional year round.
Thank you. So is, is there any source of water in Sealy, to Sealy Lake other than stormwater during spring? I don't know that there's any creek or anything, but is it?
There may, there, between the Lakewood Community Center and those apartments that are to the side, there may be some stream that comes through there, creek trickle, underground stream that comes through. We're not exactly sure. Part of that wetland delineation would determine some of those things, but primarily it's stormwater, from what we understand.
It's kind of like a smaller version of our stormwater park.
Ward's Lake? Yeah.
Freeway Fed.
Yeah.
Any other questions for, Mr. Bransfitter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dodsworth, is when we go about planning and working with, for one of a city-owned park, we use a process that consists of developing a master plan and then in phases incrementally working to implement that. I guess I didn't see that wording, a master plan, in there and, and, you know, is there a Pierce County equivalent or is what we're embarking on the creation of a master plan?
It would be a creation of a master, a type of master site plan because there's sort of different elements coming into it, but we would be doing that similar process. We feel really strongly in the City of Lakewood that we want to make sure that we're gathering good information, we're communicating with neighbors and stakeholders so that we're gathering that information, coming up with a good plan before we take that next step. And we would do that same process with this. And the county's gonna, county does that same process. There's this, I'm not exactly sure exactly what processes they use, but they have this, a similar type of public outreach process.
And we, as a council and the, in, in, in a city have been talking about the possibility of relocating our Senior Activity Center. You know, is the county aware that, at least in a, if not in a, in a short term, in a midterm, that we, you know, want to move and support the seniors in a, in a better physical facility than the one that is there that is now within the footprint of, of this plan? And, and I had also heard that the county was actually not thrilled with that building at, at all, but is, is, in your discussions about now embarking on this, is retention of that building as a part of a plan for how this park would interact with the, with the community and the public? Is that now the county's thought?
First answer to the question is, is that yes, they're aware that we may be interested in moving the Senior Activity Center to another location when and if something comes up. They were fully aware when we did an assessment several years ago and found there really wasn't anything else in the community that would provide that kind of space for the dollars that we were spending. So they were aware of that, knowing that down the road with the library, wherever we, if another opportunity presents itself, that could happen. And I'm not 100% sure what the county's intentions are for that building, but they've also had those same kinds of conversations regarding compiling operations, moving operations. But regarding this project, the only real facility we may incorporate into this design or master plan would probably be how you would access the, the trail and the, the park. And that is from the lower parking lot that they have, but that doesn't mean there may not be other access points that get created. But the develop, anything regarding their building really isn't a part of, except for maybe stormwater capacity that comes in, isn't really a part of this, this project at this time.
Yeah, currently the, the trail, you know, has, has access points on the west side in this Sealy Lake Apartments property where there have been some improvements, whether they were made by the county or whether they were made by that property owner that, that people do access the trail from that thing. And it does, the trail does follow the, the boundary or the apparent boundary of the property, abutting some, some actual residences, some multifamily units, units that are there. And there doesn't seem to be much access from the commercial development that's to the south of it, that's, that's fairly well fenced. Okay, well, I guess that I'm, as long as I'm sure that we're not committing to investing, investing in the trail system and some safety features associated with that, whether that be lighting or something, or even if it becomes down to investing in, 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 in some programming of events there, that's fine, as long as we're not signing up for any long-term involvement with that building.
Oh, yeah, this, this doesn't have anything to do with that, so that, this agreement wouldn't make, wouldn't provide any commitments to that at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd just say that when, when this comes up for vote, I'm going to recuse myself because of, and plus full disclosure, as a member of the county executive management team, I have oversight of Pierce County Parks Director and their operations. So there couldn't probably be a more direct conflict than that. I, I would note however, that I have conveyed to the Parks Director and others, the City of Lakewood has no, expressed absolutely no interest in ownership of that building. And just note as a matter of history that the Sealy Lake Park would have been turned over to Lakewood at its incorporation, like county parks normally are, Harry Todd Park being an example, except for the fact that that building was there and the Parks Administration was housed in that building, so the county kept it. So that, that's why that isolated building is in the county inventory. And it's one of, I wouldn't say many, but one of a few ugly ducklings in the county Any other questions from Ms. Dodsworth?
Just as a final note, if there isn't any problem with, that we'd like to just put this on the November 4th consent agenda, if council would be so, approval of that. Okay, thank you.
Next up?
Okay, so the next couple of items I'll be presenting, that is the 2019 and 20 mid-biennium budget adjustment and the property tax levy, followed by the upcoming calendar.
So the acting city manager calls on the finance director.
Oh, yes. Excuse me, I'll call up Ms. Kraus. So before you is the 2019 and 20 mid-biennium budget adjustment, which is being done as part of the mid-biennium review, which is a requirement by state law because we are on a biennial budget. The budget adjustment does not include certain items that will be addressed at a later date if necessary, and those include the abatement funds if demolition of the QFC building is required. The impact of Initiative 976 if it were to pass, which would take effect on December 5, 2019, and would repeal the city's ability to collect the $20 vehicle licensing fee. The use of transportation mitigation fees matched by 50% of the city funds equating to $350,000 to construct a new traffic signal at Abundale and Grabley Lake Drive to include signal coordination along the Grabley Lake Corridor. The replacement and maintenance cost for the Colonial Plaza totaling $250,000, which would be evaluated as part of the 2021 and 22 budget. And then SHB 1406, which authorizes the city to impose a local sales and use tax for affordable housing. This is a credit of the state sales tax. The estimated maximum distribution to the city is $94,000 or 1.9 million over 20 years at the .0073% annual rate, rate or annual cap. And up to 3.8 millions over 20 years at the higher rate. It also does not include the JBLM North Clear Zone Funds. The Army committed, committed up to 50 million in the first 10 years and up to a total of 80 million if extensions are needed out beyond the 50 years. This does require a 20% match equating to 10 million to 16 million. So overall, the budget adjustment includes an expenditure increase of $14.3 million and that includes 8 million in the special revenue funds and 4.4 million in the capital projects funds in 2019. And in 2020, the expenditure, it includes an expenditure decrease of 1.8 million and that is some shifting of the capital projects fund, which totaled $2.6 million reduction. But the bottom line is with all the proposed budget adjustments, which I have provided on pages 256 and through, through 267, also included a summary of all of the adjustments on pages 268 through 273. But the bottom line is with these proposed budget adjustments, we're in compliance with the 12% reserves as required for the general fund and consistent to our policies. So by the end of 2020, that will leave $4.9 million in the general fund. So rather than going through each of the line items, because I do have it detailed on those pages that I referenced, I thought I would just open it up to if there are questions, I could address those pieces if that's all right with the.
Questions for Ms. Kraus? So do we have, when's, when is the first tranche of clear zone money expected to be received from the feds?
I do not have a clear answer on that one. Can I get back to you on that?
Yeah, and you have a foggy answer, because I don't have the foggiest.
Yeah, and I, you know, I looked at it at the time that we were discussing this and it just is not in my memory at this time.
Any other questions?
In your presentation, you, you mentioned that, that the CDBG funds were being dealt with differently or not completely? I'm trying to understand, we're looking at all of the, the, all of the funds, but what is different about how the CDBG is being handled for the mid-biennium budget adjustment?
Sure. So I'm assuming that you're referencing the ending or beginning fund balance adjustment that we needed to make for CDBG? Is that correct?
Well, I, I, I see that we're, there was a comment about that we talked about an ending, beginning fund balance to be able to go and do that.
Sure.
But that the, within CDBG, we're usually tied within to an agreement that we develop in a plan that we developed jointly with the City of Tacoma and that's sort of in a, hasn't progressed as quickly as we had. And so our, is, is looking at an adjustment in CDBG funding, something that is, one of those things that's going to get put off to be a further adjustment once we get into the new year. And, and, and it's one of the things that I was concerned is it seemed to me that within that family of funds, there was a, we often did things, that we did things on a two-year basis. We've got the same amount of money in different projects each year, but there was, there was, seemed to me that there was something that only needed money for one year in 2019. And there was some discussion about then, if that money freed up, oh, how, where, where were we going to be able to? And I had, six months ago, I would have thought that at the, this budget adjustment, a mid-biennium budget adjustment, we would have been able to work to a point of where we had identified moving a block of money that no, was no longer needed, but exists, to a new use within the CDBG family. And I guess, so I'm just sort of, I guess I'm looking for an umbrella about what's all in the CDBG pot and it's cooking.
Sure, I'm going to try to address that. So there are two items or, that I'm guessing is your question. The first one has to deal with the beginning balance adjustment that we did. The city had basically set aside the balances of the CDBG loan program as a liability because we knew that those money weren't, wasn't available for anything other than restricted uses. The auditors came back and said that, no, we needed to show it as ending fund balance. So that's all we did in the budget adjustment is to comply with the requirements for financial reporting. The second part has to do with how we budget for CDBG. So in the original budget, we adopt, we propose in the budget, the allocation that we receive on an annual basis, which is around $500,000. Then throughout the year, typically during the carryforward budget adjustment, we'll take a look at all of the balances in the CDBG fund and then carry those over for future uses in the next bienn, next year. So for 2020, we'll have the 550,000 or 500,000, whatever that is. And when we close out 2019, we'll roll over balances from those different programs into the carryforward budget adjustment. I don't know if that answers your question or addresses your?
Okay, and I, and I regret that my memory doesn't allow me to be that specific, but I thought that there was one program or one element of a program that only needed $2019, only, and, and, and that, and that, so that there was a block of money that was never anticipated it would roll over, was anticipated that a new use would have to be, or could be found for that money. And I'd have to go back through my notes of some meetings that actually dealt with when we did a year ago when we were doing the biennial budget of just where that surfaced. And I'll do that in this coming week so I can better phrase, better phrase a question, but, but, but if I understand your remarks. but, but if I understand your remarks, if there is some shifting of allocations of CDB dollars, or of money that doesn't need to be rolled over, that there is an opportunity beyond this action to do that?
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Bulkey.
Just, just a couple of questions. I noticed there's money set aside for planning to do the PALS system with the county, so I guess that's moving ahead, or the plan is to continue with that, but the last time we discussed it, it wasn't, didn't seem like it was a done deal, but is this, should we assume by this adjustment that it is a done deal?
We have been working with the county, and we've agreed that this is the route that we want to go through. So what they're doing is, it's a back and forth. We need to provide the county with information, yet we don't know what it is that the county is looking for. The county knows that it needs some information, but doesn't know what our database looks like. So we've had some discussions with them, we've have a good start. I put money in there because I know that it's going to cost, the number that we got from them last time was, it could be about $80,000 with about $50,000 in annual maintenance cost. Those monies for, I don't know if you remember this, but we had set aside some technology fees, so there's a certain percentage on technology fees for building permits, and we've been accumulating that. So in the carry-forward budget adjustment, you'll see that I've accumulated those funds, and trying to get those funds to cover the one-time costs. If we don't get through that in 2019, we'll carry those funds over to pay for the development of that in 2019. But that is our plan, to go with that. The Department of Community and Economic Development have reviewed what we've seen, have a better understanding of what that PALS system looks like, and that is the route that we're hoping to take.
Okay, and so the other item is employee salaries, benefits, we're all under, we don't, we don't have any currently, any labor issues outstanding, and the assumptions so far have been correct on both paying the benefits side?
We do have a couple that are outstanding, and that is the Lakewood Management Guild, Police Management Guild. That one is under negotiations, and then we're starting up with the ASME negotiations. Both of those contracts expire at the end of the year, 2019.
Okay, so there's, but there's assumptions in the budget on paying benefits?
There is no assumption in the budget for those outstanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll get an update after those are done?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from Ms. Kraus? Thank you. Will we move to a review of the 2020 property tax levy?
Yes, and I have that one as well. So this is per state law, the city is authorized to increase the property tax by the lesser of IPD or 1%. The IPD is at 1.396%, which means that the city may increase the property tax by 1%. The city's assessed value increased by 9.5% from 6.9 to 7.6 million dollars. The proposed city levy rate, based on the recommended 1% increase, is less than a dollar, and it's currently proposed at .97 cents. The additional property tax paid by the average homeowner, based on the recommended 1% increase compared to the no increase, is $3.31. The recommended 1% increase is consistent with the proposed budget, and since 2006, the city hasn't acted the 1%. So the impact of not taking the 1% over the next six years is $439,000. Then as required by state law, we have a public hearing, which is scheduled for November 4th, and adoption is scheduled for November 18th. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions from Ms. Kraus. This is no different than the last half dozen, 10 years, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. You have any, any further items for the City Managers to report?
I do. I have just some upcoming items. On Thursday, October 24th, between 5:30 PM and 7:00 PM, we have the AWC Cities on Tap at the Indochine Asian Dining Lounge, located at 1924 Pacific Avenue in Tacoma. On Saturday, October 26th, we have a few events. From 9:00 AM to noon, we have Make a Difference Day at Fort Stilliken Park. On Saturday, also, at 11:30 is the Kiwanis Playground Dedication at Kiwanis Park. On Saturday as well, we have the EFN Abundance Dinner and Auction Event at the McGavick Center between 6:00 and 10:00 PM. Then Wednesday, October 30th, between 5:00 and 8:00 PM, we have the Community Healthcare 50th Anniversary Celebration at the Hotel Murano in Tacoma. And then finally, on November 2nd and November 3rd, which is a Saturday and Sunday, we have the Fall Cleanup Day at the LeMay Transfer Station. On Saturday, the event will be held between 8:00 and 2:00 PM, and on Sunday, it will be held between 8:00 and 12:00 PM. And that concludes my...
What was that AWC event, the first?
The AWC event, AW Cities on Tap, on Thursday, October 24th, between 5:30 and 7:00 PM at the Indochine.
I'm unfamiliar with that, so...
You're not familiar with it, or?
Ms. Bransdeter.
Yep, this is a renaming of a, of a series of events the AWC does every year to communicate to people in jurisdictions about their legislative priorities and agenda going, going into the next, next year. And the one in Tacoma is 104, that's being done around the states, so they just, why they changed the name, I think it had to do with the change in the, who's in charge of the legislative effort down at AWC, but it's...
What day is that?
It is on Thursday, October 24th, between 5:30 and 7:00 PM, at the Indochine Dining Lounge on 1924 Pacific Avenue in Tacoma.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all that I have.
Any questions for the Acting City Manager? Well, thank you much.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, we'll move to council comments. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, I attended the Military Affairs Meeting, where the Second Strike Brigade was the presenter. They showed a video on the Lancer Demonstration of how they have already. It was very good, a lot of great attendance. One of the questions that came out from the audience was how they could get more involved with the military. So they are offering up opportunities for people that are interested to come to their events, to make it easy for them to get on base. So they're working on that. On Saturday, I attended the Filipino-American History Month Celebration at Montahoma High School. It was a great event, well-attended, and they appreciated the city's presence there, along with other dignitaries that had been mostly Filipino. It was good to meet them, talk to them, understand how they operate, how we do similar situations and stuff like that, so it was great. And I will be attending the LASSA Fundraising Breakfast on Thursday, Clover Park Technical College. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Mr. Bransdeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, I did attend the, last Thursday, the candlelight vigil that took place in Springbrook, outside of the McCord Mart, where the owner died during a, an interaction with a customer during a theft at the, at that, at that location. There were about 60 people that attended, most of whom appeared to walk there, so I took them as being local neighborhood residents, and there was the, the Korean television station out of Federal Way was there and televised that. You know, as, as a, as a follow-on to that, that I understand that the Korean Grocers Association is going to be holding some, some training for many of the, their members who operate small stores of that nature regarding safety and, and how to deal and not deal with persons who are shoplifting. That, and the City Manager, Mr. Caulfield, has also told me that, you know, he's going to be looking at Ms. Newton to become engaged with however ownership of that store transitions, so that that store does not remain closed for an extended period of time, because it's, you know, Springbrook is one of those food deserts where there's, including the McCord Mart, there were three convenience stores, and that was the, you know, the only food shopping in that, in that, in that neighborhood. So, you know, looking, hoping that the city will be involved as well as, I'm sure that the, the case is a priority for Chief Zarro and his folks to, to identify the individual that killed Mrs. Che, and, and bring that to an end. I also attended the Philippine-American event, and I went there in the afternoon specifically to, to be a part and be present during the, the presentation of the Congressional Gold Medal to veterans of World War II who were a part of the Philippine forces, or were in with the, you know, regular US forces. They, they presented about 60, that two were actually presented to living veterans who were there and were present, the others were presented to families that had made the, the effort to apply and qualify their, their former family member, who was a veteran, to be able to receive the medal. And the, and the event was done, done very well, you know, you know, a lot of times when you have events that have, where you're presenting something to 60 people, you, you rush them across the stage quickly, and here, they, they took 30 or 40 seconds for each person made sure that they took specifically photos of the family members, or the group of family members are there, and many of them came with a, with a photo of the veteran to be able to go and do that. So particularly as we were approaching Veterans Day, I thought it was a, you know, a really thing to do there, and two of the families that received the Congressional Gold Medal for a veteran from their family were from Lakewood, and I gave those families a city coin in addition to doing that, to recognize, to do that. And then, and early on Saturday, I was, I worked with about a dozen other people, where we took some stretches of Clover Creek and hauled a good bit of trash and things out of there to be able to go and do that. We had great plans, because when we, when that was, when that was planned, it was planned 10 days ago, and the creek was virtually dry. And, and we, and we thought we would be able to do that, that it, it, it had some depth of water in it to be able to go and do that. But, because I didn't stay out there all day, but they actually covered the creek all the way from Springbrook Park down most of the way to Gravely Lake Drive, and property owners who had properties abutting the creek, many of them had followed through with a request to move their green trash containers to the back of their yards along the creek, so that as trash along that could be just placed into those, rather than having to be hiked a half a mile in one direction or the other to get out. So it was a thing, and it sort of was, it was a related function to our Shoreline Management Program Restoration Appendix, where we were looking to, to do some things. And it was refreshing to see that there were a good number of people that are interested in the health, the health of the creek, in, in doing that. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Simpson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to add to anything spoken to tonight, but Mr. Bransdeter's remarks did put me in mind of an interesting history lesson. I spent a fair amount of time in the first part of the military in the Philippines, and in fact, that's where I took some of my survival training. And I remember talking to a man who, he was 11 years old when the Japanese took the islands and killed everyone in his family. He was one of those Philippine scouts, and I attended the ceremony you're talking about last year, who fought the Japanese. There were no more fierce fighters than the Philippine scouts, and there were no more steadfast allies to the Americans when the Americans did finally come back into the islands, who fought alongside the Americans to take those islands. So I appreciate your comments, Mike, about these individuals, because they are, they are truly soldiers who elicit a great deal of admiration and respect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to echo Mr. Simpson's remarks. I had the opportunity, when I was stationed on Guam, to meet a number of survivors of Ibatan Death March. I walked it, I visited Corregidor, in fact, the federal judge in Guam at the time, Cristo Alduainus, had survived the Death March as a Philippine scout. And to this day, the bond that was forged between the Filipino people and the US is, remains a lot stronger on that side of the water than it does here. So we need to recognize that. It was with, I note this early, it was with some disappointment that I saw that the Martin Luther King Organizing Committee broke with tradition, and after I had bought my airline tickets to leave town on the evening of the Saturday before Martin Luther King's Day, so that I could be here for this ceremony, I postponed it, but my, my non-refundable tickets were purchased several weeks ago, so I can't be there. Speaking of purchasing, on Thursday, I had the opportunity to make opening remarks at the Purchasing Forum jointly held by Pierce County and Lakewood Economic Development at, at a McGavick Center. There were about 10 or more government organizations represented there. It was focused on contracting the federal government, state government, and local governments, and it was, I think, well-attended. There were about 200 attendees. So that went well again, and then can't help but mention yet again that on Saturday, there was a monumental football game played at Monlake, and the best team won.
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Simpson.
I will root for any team that plays against Washington, but specifically the University of Oregon.
Anything further come before the council? Then we're adjourned. Hour and five minutes, I bet.